Alrighty. Let's get rolling. Can everyone see that, first off?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, everyone, thank you so much for joining us. This is USPK's first ever town hall. We've got this one opened up to the public. So you don't have to be a member to join this one. And yeah, we're really excited to get going and kind of show you guys what we've been up to over the past year, as well as talk a little bit more about where hopefully we're going and where Parkour is kind of going in the next year as well. Let's see. So just a brief overview of kind of what we're going to be covering today. We're going to go through some introductions, talk about who everyone is, a little bit more about USPK's mission. Then we're going to go through specific areas where we've kind of identified it's going to be strategically important for Parkour to pay attention to over the next couple of years and specific areas where USPK is trying to kind of establish either like industry standards or our strategic priorities. Then after that, we're going to talk a little bit more about how most of you can get involved in kind of what we're doing. Obviously, this is, you know, a national governing body. We are representatives of the community and so we need you guys to be as involved as possible because without you, there is no us. So we'll talk specifically about kind of the different volunteer paths that we have, as well as other ways to help out what we're doing and just in general. Yeah, be part of the community here. And then our last part, which is kind of the first time we're doing this as well, is we're going to have specific breakouts. And each of our board members is going to lead kind of one area that we're going to be talking about on a specific issue. And we're going to try and do this for every single town hall that we have. And so keep an eye on kind of when we're coming out with these because we are always taking input for what you guys would like to talk about most.
Alright, so I'm gonna take over here. So for those of you who are still kind of new to this organization and what we've been up to, United States Parkour Fund Association was established in 2018 in response to the FIG crisis and has kind of grown to take on a larger set of responsibilities as we've been thinking about how we can best serve and support the community. We established our mission as to advance the growth and development of parkour in the United States through advocacy, education, community, and government governance. And we'll talk about that a little more in detail, exactly what that means and what that's going to look like in a few slides. But another kind of element of this is that we are a 501(c)(3) registered nonprofit, which means we are regulated by the federal government. And the way that the United States Parkour Association has been organized is that it's run by a Board of Directors and staff together. So the Board of Directors is entirely volunteer. It's composed of appointed, elected, and independent directors. So appointed and elected directors tend to be members from within the community. We're actually going to have elections next year to fulfill several of those positions. And then we also look to bring on independent directors who are outside of USPK, outside of Parkour, who have area expertise in things like legal and finance that can help us be more sound and transparent. Tied to that, we also do have a staff which is still volunteer, but hopefully in the future would be able to do this at least in a paid capacity. Currently Cozy and Adam, I'll introduce him in a second, has taken on our first staff role as Executive Director. But we do have hope for that to grow as well and support the organization doing the day-to-day operations. So Board of Directors providing guidance will almost always be majority parkour community members who give guidance to the staff and then execute the mission. So we can jump forward there, Blake. Or, yep.
So as Caitlin mentioned, this is a working board. So all of these folks work extremely hard and volunteer their time. So let's go ahead and have them introduce themselves.
Yep, so I'm Caitlin Pontrelli. I'm currently based in Seattle. I've been doing parkour for about 13 years now. I started off back in New York City. I helped build the movement Creative and then most recently was working with Proper Visions and now serve as their Board President. My full-time work actually is in the nonprofit sector in large, so I get to bring that expertise to the board.
Hey, I'm Alan, founder of Enso Movement. I'm also one of the co-directors with Caitlin on Are They Retreat? And yeah, I'm super happy to be here on the USPK board.
Mark is currently, they go back, sorry, Cozy. Mark is also on the board. He's the founder of American Parkour. He is currently listening in because he's on the road. So he can't try to say, but he serves as our treasurer on the board today.
Is it me? Am I live?
Yeah, that's you, Mark. Perfect.
Go for it.
Hey, sorry about that. I was just cutting off by GPS and I apologize for being on the road. Yeah, I just want to say hi. I have experience from my job as a registered stockbroker, investment banker, technology for that, transitioning into the parkour world, running a parkour gym, and building stuff. So I'm just really interested in trying to bring whatever experience I have to the parkour world that can benefit it and sort of start information share across things and get other people's opinions in the room and kind of join all that together. So love to see people in that best practices break out if you're so inclined later.
Well, I'm Blake Evett. I'm the Director of Parkour Generations Americas and run our branch in Boston. I'm serving as a Secretary of USPK and I also help to run the American Rendezvous Community Event. And I'll pass it back to Cozy.
Yeah, and actually I'm gonna jump really fast. So I'm excited to introduce Adam to everybody. We hired, hired, onboarded Adam as our Executive Director, our first official staff member. USPK has been operating primarily as a working board. There used to be two others that are part of our board, Amos and Frosty. Michael's are now. I'm not used to calling them that name. And they've phased out their terms already. And so we decided to bring on Executive Director to help us organize a little more effectively and obviously start building our staff. So I'm going to turn it on to Adam to introduce himself.
Awesome. Thanks Caitlin. Yeah, super excited to be a part of USPK. This was specifically fitting exactly what I was looking for with kind of parkour governance. And yeah, I hope I can bring a lot to bear. I have a lot of background in cybersecurity and the FBI before that. So hoping to kind of bring some of that leadership that I was doing there to USPK and kind of set us on hopefully a good path and direction. Been doing parkour for about nine to 10 years, which yeah, I saw Caitlin look off and like think about that. And it's it's weird to think about that at this point. How long have I been doing that? But yeah, so extremely excited to be working with all of these talented folks who I've known in the parkour community, I think, for quite some time or have at least seen their work. So yeah, and as Caitlin said, my role is going to be kind of to steer things and hopefully hire a lot more folks as volunteers first and then hopefully paid positions later to kind of build this organization out.
So as I mentioned earlier in our mission, we had these sort of four areas that we're looking to help support through our actions. One is advocacy, education, community, and governance. And this slide and this whole presentation is going to be made available with some extra notes. So you can view afterwards if you miss anything and need to go back. But advocacy essentially is the organization working to increase the legitimacy and raise awareness of parkour on a national level, supporting efforts such as public park advocacy, diversity, inclusion in communities, engaging in some public speaking again to help address and help reset the media image of parkour and a variety of other sorts of activities that again improve public image of parkour. In terms of education, USPK wants to help advance education that is focused on protecting the health, safety, and welfare of students. So a part of this effort, we've been talking with the various certifications offered around the country about accreditation in regards to safety, again, how to support and push parkour into schools and gym, public outreach, again tied closely to advocacy, and then also education on how to, in general, about stewardship and governance on our part. The other two areas of actions, community and governance. For community, this is improving interstate cooperation, expanding our reach as a community and organization beyond the bounds of parkour and also affecting change in our communities in general. Things that we have specifically under this banner in this year and the coming years includes industry research or community research, what we're doing, what parkour's impact is. Coordinating national calendar with our various communities across the country and even providing event gym and program sponsorships through a couple mechanisms that are available through nonprofit structuring. And then finally, obviously, a core component of what we do is governance. And this obviously comes and is created in partnership with everyone here, the community and beyond here. But the big focus is on health, safety, and welfare practitioners. So setting industry standards on new business operations and construction guidelines, competition, safety, ethics, and insurance. A large part of what we're committed to is not necessarily telling you how to teach in terms like what you're teaching, but ensuring that it's safe and that it's in the best consideration of the students you're working with. And we'll expand all the things that we're going to talk about, key strategic activities, all inside of one of these four buckets. And I think, am I, I think it's Alan. I handed it over to Alan here. Alan, you're muted. Alan.
Alan. Yep, there we go. Thanks Caitlin. Yes, so following Caitlin's areas of actions, we've decided as teams that we have six areas that we're trying to put a lot of our effort towards after talking to industry leaders, governing bodies, and listening to some of the community members on where we can kind of start to put some action in. Those six items include expanding membership, releasing industry standards, insurance, expanding our committees, an economic survey for businesses, and then having election preparedness. Towards the end of this, we'll also talk a little bit about FIG and Parkour Earth. So just hang in tight.
Alright, so the first thing that we're going to be focusing on is expanding our membership. As USPK is an organization for the people by the people, it's really important that we try to have a representative swath of the parkour community. And that really starts with you. That's why these meetings are open to the public and we'll be really trying to do a lot of outreach to the general public to try to get people on board so that you guys can have your voices heard and we can make decisions based on what you want. So our goals for 2021 are to really to reach 75 organizational members and 500 individual members. We're kind of taking a three-pronged approach for this. So that means that part of it is going to be based on community outreach, which is going to be going through gyms and organizations and groups to try to get their member bases engaged. The other piece is events. So having a presence at the big parkour events, competitions, workshops, get-togethers, jams. And then the last piece is really peer-to-peer. And that's where we're going to be really depending on you is to get your fellow practitioners and friends and parents and anybody that knows and loves parkour to join because the more voices that we have and the more we can pull together, the more we can really make a difference and not be co-opted.
Awesome. Let's see. Okay, so for our second priority is basically to create industry standards. And while that can come across as sounding like really boring and like we're telling you exactly what to do, that's the exact opposite approach that we're taking. Some of these industry standards around certifications or gym design build or anything like that are designed so that they are there in the first place and somebody can't come along and kind of tell us what to do. They are by no means as rigid as I think a lot of people think of when they think of national governing bodies and kind of their standards. So we can change these over time, but the idea is to get these things down on paper. And specifically what we're looking at doing for industry standards are critical areas such as competitions, certifications, gym design builds, risk management, and park design. So for our 2021 goal, we're looking at evaluating at least five or more of the existing major parkour certification programs. We're launching a competition outreach platform. This is basically, when I say platform, I don't mean anything that's necessarily going to tell you how to run your competition. Again, we want you guys to have as much freedom as possible. But we'd like eventually for there to be some sort of kind of USPK stamp of approval so that it passes basic safety standards. So that you know that as, as you know, somebody that runs that competition, everyone knows competing, that it's up to certain safety standards. We're also going to be releasing quarterly best business practices, especially during this, you know, fraught year of COVID where everyone's kind of normal business plans were turned upside down. We've noticed that, you know, some of the things that we've been requested the most are kind of pooling of those resources and knowledge from around the different communities and exactly how they're coping with new challenges like that. So we'll be releasing those quarterly in you know, some sort of format going forward.
And I just want to jump into and reemphasize that we're not trying to homogenize practice through setting standards. We definitely want to allow for a diversity of approaches, languages of movement, styles, competition structures even. But we are looking to again, set some more care towards how we as a community are taking in consideration again, the safety, welfare of those practicing and how we ensure their safety as instructors and how we ensure their safety as community practitioners and parents and so on and so forth.
And speaking of insurance, we are also trying to build out the capabilities for insurance across the country. We realize that insurance is a must-have, especially being here in our current society and business climate. And we want to make sure that it's accessible, affordable, and effective because we realize that in the past, there have been a number of different products that are available out there. And the insurance industry is a bit of a maze at times. And we want to make sure that our community is able to safely and effectively operate their businesses. So one of the goals is already accomplished. We have a partnership with FL Dean. We'll talk about more about that soon. That offers high-quality parkour insurance to gyms and members. And there's more information on that on the website. But the other big piece of that is the long-term goal of creating a shared data pool from injury data to participation data from all of the different member organizations to be able to show the world and especially the insurance agency just what parkour is and be able to back that up with actual numbers, which is really important. So one of our big goals is to build that relationship, strengthen that relationship, and then be able to carry that on and work for the growth of all of our organizations. And Mark is up and I believe he can't see. So Mark, if you want to chime in now.
Oh, I think Mark, we're skipping over Mark and someone else is going to take over his slide because he's.
I can, I can do this one. No worries. So yeah, the kind of our fourth one is definitely expanding the existing committees that we have. You'll see kind of us talk about committees, task forces, as well as communities. The idea behind committees, especially as Caitlin will tell you, having a lot of nonprofit experience, certain at a national governing body with committees, you're supposed to have things like a legal committee and ethics committee. And then we'll have more specific task forces which are designed to achieve like a very specific goal. And the idea is that so far existing committees have been mostly board-led. We have a working board, which means rather than just doing strategic advising, they're actually kind of in the trenches, working with you guys to, you know, carve out our strategic goals at this point. So the idea is that eventually some of these kind of stand up on their own and we have people within the community leading those as well. And really, this is where the heart of the action is. Because this is kind of how we get to decide where parkour goes next. And so we are constantly looking for folks to join task forces, propose new ones. I think that's a really big one as well. We can't be doing all the thinking on this. Everyone else has a ton of great ideas out there and the ones that we've heard so far coming in are fantastic. So definitely keep suggesting those. But our 2021 goal is basically to fill some of these critical committee positions with our volunteers. And basically those committees then have some sort of charter or work plan that we can go forward and hopefully accomplish a lot more in a shorter period of time.
Can I just add to that? That another thing we really want to see kind of specifically is people stepping up and starting some of these knowledge communities where it would be great to have, you know, we have the parkour gym owners Facebook group. But it would be great if we had something like that specifically within USPK. So there are a ton of different ideas that could be knowledge communities that really need to be run by somebody other than the board. They need to be community-driven by their very nature. Where some things can be more board-driven. For example, a board, a build, a build guidelines committee can be more board-driven, but something like a business best practices would be a great knowledge community, not based on a board member's kind of single guidance or input.
Yeah, and Mark, I'll go in more detail about what knowledge communities are and some examples of things that can and will be created a little farther. We can talk about how to get more involved.
Oh, cool. Sorry if I jumped ahead.
No, I remember that you wanted me to bring some up. So I'll let you know, we're definitely going to get some of those in there too.
Okay, sweet. Thank you.
So the last two things, obviously, we're highlighting six things that we're really focusing on 2021. Obviously, there's a lot of things we could be focusing on, but we're trying to prioritize based on what's kind of happening with FIG and also what we think needs to be first steps for our community to be more secure. One of these things is like an industry slash economic survey that basically will collect data on, from gyms and key organizations on their size or demographics, the amount of money they're making within, you know, bands of money. They're not looking for specifics, extreme specifics. But this will help us evaluate, you know, exactly what the community looks like and what it's up to, which is incredibly beneficial for anyone who is trying to get anything done with parkour. So if you're trying to get a school program started, build a relationship with the local government, secure funding for a gym or a community project, this kind of like large-scale data can be really invaluable in making your case about just how large parkour is in terms of activity and participation. So we're hoping that we already have the survey designed and we're pretty much ready to start rolling out. We're probably looking at mid-year so we can hopefully get some more member organizations on board. A part of that we will be doing targeted outreach, trying to get other groups involved that are beyond our membership as well to give us the most complete picture possible. And this would be an annual thing that we're going to be doing, the data and results being made available. I know that there was a parkour census done by MoveMag at one point. But again, that's a for-profit entity and we're a nonprofit entity and the data would be transparently made available. It's not for commercial purposes on our end. But it is for your usage as community members to help improve your communities. And that's something again, we'll also support with education on how to leverage that data. So and then you can keep going, Blake. And then last, the other big activity for this year is election preparedness. As I mentioned earlier, the board is composed of appointed and elected directors. And we, I think, are planning to have four positions up for elections essentially next year. So we are in the process of revisiting our bylaws and looking what we originally designed as election process, filling in the gaps and getting all the systems in place. And obviously, that's tied to expanding membership and increasing activity in the organization so that we can by the start of next year be ready to start taking nominations and facilitating an election process in 2020, 2022, sorry, early 2022. And then last but not least, if they're going to move on to talk very briefly about the current situation with FIG, and I'm going to let Adam chat a little bit here and I'll hop in if I need to, but I think we are on the same page, so.
Sure, sounds good. Yeah, so the elephant in the room, it's a fairly large one, but hopefully everyone's excited to talk about this. So the current situation, as I'm sure a lot of folks saw, Parkour was elected to not be in the Paris 2024 Olympics under FIG. That's great news from our perspective because it gives us a lot more time. We have, we have a very narrow window, I feel like, to make some improvements and kind of improve our standing where that's concerned. The bad news was that I think Parkour Earth, who we're members of, also had made a bid for Parkour being recognized in the IRC, which was, I think, just met with silence, actually not outright rejected. We also know that, of course, the IPF has nixed their previous memorandum of understanding with USA Gymnastics and has signed one with obstacle course racing, which is kind of another, I guess, IOC potential avenue for Parkour to be in the Olympics. So basically where this leaves us at this point, our actions this past year, we've taken more steps basically to kind of get ahead of this curve, even not knowing the recent outcome of the Paris 2024 Olympics, was to basically try and position ourselves and create more of a foundation so that we're in a better position when these discussions start to happen again. Because now they kind of get paused and put on hold, but that doesn't mean that FIG is necessarily going to stop what they're doing. They're very much in kind of a research phase. They're aware of what we're doing. They're aware of what IPF is doing and what Parkour Earth is doing as well. We did join Parkour Earth as a member in May 2020. So we actually have sat in on a couple of the different Parkour Earth meetings. They've kind of been kicking off their own kind of global meetings as well as just participatory kind of town halls like this one, trying to elicit topics and kind of areas of focus where the parkour community wants to see them go. So those have been extremely fruitful and great to talk to a lot of our international partners. The meetings are early. They're on all New Zealand time at this point, but that kind of makes it more fun. We've also had quite a few different discussions with other national governing bodies such as USA Skateboarding, USA Synchro, and a few others to kind of get a little bit more experience in this field and know exactly how the game is played. And a lot of them have been extremely forthcoming with kind of information on how a lot of this works. USA Skateboarding was pretty pumped that we reached out to them because they saw skateboarding as something brand new and extremely accessible. And the first thing the director said to me was, you know, if we thought that skateboarding was accessible, Parkour is going to take that to the next level. You don't even need a board, you know, so. So when they think about that, that's definitely something that, you know, stands out about Parkour to other NGBs at this point. This next point might be a little controversial, but we did establish our initial contact with USA Gymnastics. That was just supposed to be kind of an initial meeting with our board members and some of their board members as well. So that sit-down basically just entailed kind of, you know, getting to know each other and find out what the others kind of up to at this point. So our approach there is to keep relations cordial. You know, we can say F FIG all day, but really when it comes down to it, you know, burning bridges at this point isn't smart. We need to lay these foundations so that at some point they potentially come to us because we have exactly everything that they need or OCR comes to us. So in the meantime, what we can do to lay some of those foundations are be an example for good governance and fair representation of Parkour. The more that we're able to build out things like the economic survey, certification standards, a lot of those industry standards that we talked about earlier, earlier, if that work is already done, any organization that kind of wants to take over Parkour in the US is going to have to like do all of that from scratch. Whereas if they work with us, they're able to get that information. So it makes it a lot more appealing to work with us. The other big thing that we can do, of course, is expand membership with any NGB. Membership is a huge deal. So that's why you'll see us very much pushing that. We want your input. We want your, you know, community to, you know, pitch us ideas and let us know kind of what it is that you guys need the most. Because like I said, we're hoping to represent you guys. So we want to establish, you know, better connections with you, the community, as well as other sports industry relationships. So that, like I said, when these talks with FIG- as well as other sports industry relationships so that, like I said, when these talks with FIG start to come back up and they start to push again on parkour in the Olympics, we'll be definitely a part of that conversation. And I think Parkour Earth has very similar goals as well.
I think I'm gonna jump in here and just say that the FIG issue is very political. Parkour going into the Olympics is a very political activity to the sense that even if US gymnastics didn't want to necessarily take under parkour, if FIG, which they're part of, motions that they have to, there's a lot of political pressure for them to do so. So and then the reason why we established that relationship, at least preliminarily right now, is if push comes to shove and the IOC says FIG is the one, that we also have a positive relationship that we can push on here domestically to have influence over what that looks like. This is all very preliminary, we're happy to take questions on this, but.
Yeah, we'll say, we'll say questions towards the end, but.
At the end, sorry, yeah, to be clear.
No worries. But yeah, that's, that's a, that's a critical point, Caitlin. And and part of the reason that we decided to reach out this year was because for any of you who saw, I believe it's Athlete A was the Netflix documentary on a lot of the sexual abuse and scandal that occurred with with FIG, or specifically USA Gymnastics. So after a lot of that happened, they completely reset their board, they brought on a very new progressive CEO. So, you know, that was good timing, basically, because they were, they were coming in with a lot of fresh mindset because they previously done nothing and their own gymnastics community was extremely pissed off at them. So it's a, it's a very good time to to reach out and kind of talk to folks when they're brand new in those positions so that they can keep that in mind going forward, that we're here, we're ready to talk. Yeah.
So we can keep bumping forward, I think.
Okay, so we're gonna go over a little bit more about how you specifically, who are watching and listening, hopefully, can get involved with what USPK is doing here. And there's basically kind of six paths on how to go through that.
I think this is you, Cozy.
Hey, you're right. Yeah, so the the first one, of course, is become a member. As I mentioned before, that's critical for any national governing body, is to have members. Without members, we really don't have much. There are two different types of memberships that USPK offers. We offer an organizational one geared towards businesses as well as an individual membership. So what your membership basically gets you is the ability to vote in our elections. You will, of course, I think a lot of people have already noticed that we've offered insurance for our members. You're able to apply as an individual to run for a board position, an org, I don't think can do that, but just, just an individual in this case. And it will also gain you access to a lot of this industry data that we're building up over time, which again can be super useful to both individuals and organizations going forward. And of course, just support and access to resources. I think that's the probably the biggest one here is actually we're trying to just kind of develop more of, you know, community databases so that, you know, if you want to reach out to other communities in different states, you're able to access that, jam calendars, you know, other competition calendars so that you know exactly what's going on with parkour at any given time. And like I said, some unique accesses for businesses such as those best business practices and access to, like I said, hopefully, better insurance as we kind of build those sorts of things out. We are going to, I don't know if most folks have basically seen that at this point we had offered a discount on on our membership for the remainder of 2020. So if you haven't seen that, go ahead, we'll include links at the end here to sign up for membership. But it's basically free for the rest of the year. We will also entertain doing a hardship waiver option for early 2021 because we know that the effects of COVID have been, you know, extremely heavy on a lot of our member gyms. And it's been really sad to see a lot of our, our community, you know, gyms closing down. So that will basically just be, you know, kind of an option where you can mail us, let us know what's going on. Hey, I can afford this right now, but I'm interested in being a member and we're happy to work with you guys, we get it, this is a tough year.
The other thing we can do is join a task force.
Sorry, I'm going.
Well, yeah, so the other thing that you can do is also join a task force. As you all might recall, task force is a temporary committee that the board has set for us to kind of create an action towards any of the the goals that we've we've set forth. We have the build committee with Mark Two Rock and Mark has worked really hard to set safety standards, provide build recommendations, and hopefully we can, we can put more down in the pipeline. Blake runs the certification committee. We're trying to go back to the areas of action, lowering barriers to insurance, demonstrating the safety standards that we have with coaching. The competition committee is working with myself and we're building a rulebook for a lot of the competitions that are, the events are organizing. And then we have marketing with Blake, kind of working on branding and really getting our, our word out there about all the work that we're doing and what the community would like to see.
And to be clear, this is, these are trees led by those individuals, but there are multiple people working together on it. So it's not just Alan coming up with competition, competition systems, but he's working with other people who are also involved with the competition organizing scene to do this work. Same thing with Blake and Mark. So these are, these are already community driven efforts.
Yeah, and each and every task force has dedicated meetings, some of them meet once a week, others meet, you know, every two weeks, kind of works to to different schedules. But what I really appreciate about the task forces that we're able to hear and pull directly experience from community members.
I know one thing we didn't include on this slide, Alan, and board members, is a way to get involved or express interest in joining a task force. We will have, we will release a blog post after this, you know, the next couple of days with links to all the things you need to get involved in any one of these, which ways. So earlier, we mentioned knowledge communities, heard it said a couple of times. When we actually conceived of the United States Parkour Association, we called these special interest groups. But knowledge communities, I think, makes a little more sense for people from the outside to understand what they are. Knowledge communities are basically member created groups that are focused on knowledge sharing. Usually these groups will share some kind of personal interest or a specific topic, or even a shared identity. So what that might look like, for example, is a knowledge community focused on accessibility, where it's people who are specifically interested in expanding accessibility, whether it's through use of sign language, better design, thoughtfulness around practice, but it's focused on that subject. Knowledge communities can also be formed regionally between in a state or even a set of states who want to have a neutral platform to communicate and organize together through sort of kind of breaking down the power play that kind of comes into play, I think, sometimes when people are trying to organize across the same geographic region. Other ones that there's been expressed interest for is history and heritage, knowledge communities, some people who want to collect and share heritage and history information about parkour, as well as park advocacy, which we're actually gonna have a breakout group focused on that a little later. So these are just a couple, but again, these are things that people have proposed to us and it's gonna be entirely on you in the community to decide where you feel we should be taking greater action. And knowledge communities basically get to work together to create resources, make recommendations to the board on how to take action. And, you know, even get opportunities to present at meetings like this, some of the work that they're doing. So a great opportunity to kind of again, focus and centralize an issue that's of importance to you in the community. And again, that'll also be, we'll have a little form you can fill out if you're interested in starting one and we'll send that along.
Also, with, if you have an idea or an opinion, we offer a platform for you to share your voice to a larger audience that will impact parkour practitioners, advocates, business leaders, et cetera. All you have to do is shoot us an email at contact@USPK and we'll push it on to our audience. We're, we're really open to any kind of opinions or thoughts or anything that's subject related to parkour, whether it's the practice or the profession, and we'd really love to hear your voice.
Okay, and we also have plenty of volunteer roles. And the volunteers at this point are really kind of the lifeblood of what USPK does. We're constantly looking for new community members, you know, especially with specific skills such as marketing, legal, photography, videography, editorial, IT skills. We actually have, you know, a full page on that. And a lot of times when you'll fill out this information, we'll specifically ask for a little bit of background information from you. That's just so we get to know you a little bit better, first off, know how to address you, as well as kind of what your background is so we can appropriately place you in a spot that you're gonna feel comfortable. We are currently looking to fill three critical volunteer staff positions. These are positions that would be working directly with me on the staff. Marketing coordinator, membership coordinator and IT administrator. So folks help out, obviously, with kind of what we're doing marketing wise. We do hope to be a little bit more consistent on social media. The, the whole board has talked about, that's something we, we definitely need to improve a little bit. And we want to maintain constant contact with you guys. Membership coordinator, that's gonna be a lot of just handling specifically, things like noting which volunteers are coming in at which time. And IT administrator, of course, is just helping out with the website and all the backend stuff there. So if you're interested in any of these positions, definitely email us again at that contact@USPK.org email and specifically put the position that you're applying for in the subject line so we know.
And last but not least, this is just a slide, again, this is be accessible afterwards. Other ways just to stay connected to us as we try to communicate more with all of you. Because as Cozy said, you know, we are, we are pretty active, we meet every single week and then we all work independently throughout the week, as well as our task forces and our committees on various projects. So while we are not, we have not been, I'd say like, A plus quality in terms of telling the world of what we're up to. We have been busy and we are gonna be making a more concerted effort to do so. So these are platforms in which we're gonna be sharing more regularly. And I think we're gonna be moving now into, it's about 5:45, oh, 5:45 my time. Basically about 10 minutes of questions or at most, and then we're gonna slide over to community workshops and a conversation. So if there's any questions right now, what's the best way to? We can do written or I guess people can unmute themselves and we'll field a few until about the 50, sorry, the top of the hour and then we'll switch over and move into breakouts. Does that sound good? Adam, okay, cool.
Yeah, perfect.
So we will leave it open. Also, if there are no questions, we can just jump right over into the next slide, too.
I am checking chat in case anyone feels like typing and not speaking. But otherwise, go ahead and unmute yourselves.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I was curious on, my name's Mitchell, I'm with Nebraska Parkour, we're very, very small and have a gym, so talent is not that great. Yep. I was looking at, you know, post pandemic era, post pandemic after the assault over. You're asking for a lot of community support, which is great, really all that. I think there is like a lot of people who will say they can do things when they really can't, especially if campus goes out in gyms, they're really busy. A handful of other gyms close down, so they wanna help, but they probably can't. What are you, if you could like list your top six initiatives in regards to priority? If you have to jot some of them, just focus on three or four of the ones in the next four years, what would those be in the power of language? Given like, if you don't have that much stability.
Can I just repeat the questions? You're, you're interested in what our, our top couple of priorities are gonna be over the next three to four years? Okay. Okay, great. And if anyone else wants to jump in, you're welcome to. Our first priority urgently is to expand membership because that also gives us leverage as an organization. So the more gyms and organizations and their membership respectively that is represented by our organization gives us more room to claim that we are actually representing the community. So that when the FIG question comes up, we can say, hey, we're, we represent 75 gyms who represent in themselves another 100,000, 200,000 practitioners. So that is definitely our top prayer of the next year to two years is to expand aggressively our membership and involvement in the organization. Because that gives us a degree of power and authority essentially. Following that, I would say that there's a couple of different things that we are concerned with based on those six that we did present. Setting and refining industry standards, especially around safety and welfare, whether it's through certification accreditation and getting those certifications involved with us. Or providing better risk management practices to our communities. A lot of the parkour community is driven by its leadership. That's not just gym owners, but community organizers and casual practitioners who end up in these kinds of pseudo volunteer leadership positions. So being able to provide support and guidance in that way so that also people from the outside trying to find parkour can identify organizations that are doing it safely. I think that that's a big issue we're gonna face as a community as gymnastics takes a greater interest in parkour that you have a lot of gymnastics facilities suddenly offering parkour or some sort of pseudo parkour without actually having someone who is familiar with the practice teaching it. So we want to be able to give sort of a stamp to gyms to say, yes, these are authentic or actually a part of the community so that people from the outside can identify where to practice. And of the remaining priorities that we, just to pick like the third one, if I had to say, is ensuring that the combination of industry study and insurance go forward smoothly over the next two years. Insurance is that kind of third piece, in my opinion, that ensures the continuity of practice by, again, our coaches, without the ability for our coaches and our leadership to have a protection, it becomes very difficult then to share practice competitively with other groups trying to essentially take over parkour. There's a word for it, I'm blanking on it, so.
Encroach.
Yeah, thank you, encroach, appropriate. And so that's why the industry study tied to that will help influence lower the costs of insurance and make it hopefully more available. I think it'd be great to have several insurance providers who are capable of supporting the community and its coaching and leadership because then again, we're never in a position where if a provider stops and if you talk to anyone who's ever been in this, I'm sure you have. And that if you lose your insurance, you're kind of effed. So, and I've had a couple communities over the years have to stop and cease operations as they've kind of scrambled to find new providers. I don't know if Alan, Adam, Blake, if you wanna add on to anything there.
I, I would just say that a lot of those are are linked, you know, by having some of those industry standards and and kind of some of the initiatives that we've looked at by, you know, collecting injury data. That that makes it so much easier to do things like approach insurance companies and say, hey, actually, parkour is much safer than American football. If you look at the injury rates here. But by having some of those things, we, we establish that kind of foundation early on and they kind of cycle and help each other.
And I think one of the other things to add is that thus far, we've, we've been functioning with basically different board members taking a lead on, on a lot of these projects. And the more people we have as part of the organization, the more we can tackle. And right now, we've got a really solid group of five to eight individuals that are doing the lion's share of the work. But the more, more people we have, the more we can get done.
And the biggest thing, I think, to wrap this up is the byproduct of all these activities is deepened community connection. I think something that the Art of Retreat really gave me, which is a coaching slash leadership event that brings people all together from across the world, is that the more connection and communication there is, the stronger our community is as a whole. And so all of these activities, hopefully involving more members of our community, will lead to enhanced connection and enhance communication, enhance problem solving. We're all kind of, I think, facing the same problems with a different like flavor or geographic twist, but they are the same problems. Instead of struggling alone, we can work together.
Got a question from Emily Fleet.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me okay? Oh, good. Sweet. My name is Austin.
Sweet. My name is Austin. Emily is my wife. She's right here. So I was wondering, this might be old news by now, but I want to kind of broadly ask about any interactions you guys may have had with WFPF and what you guys, that was kind of like the, the new news kind of controversy about a year ago. And I'm curious if they, if you know anything about their involvement with FIG and IPF recently? And whether they have been trying to mobilize any other kind of national governing bodies internationally or whether they care anymore?
I can start and then maybe one of the board members can hop in. When USPK was first formed, we did invite WFPF to come and be a part of the formation of this, recognizing that you represent a portion of the parkour community here in the United States. They did decline participation at that point and we've attempted to maintain neutral friendly relations for the most part. They have obviously interacted with us as a group. And then there was the IPF thing, but I know WFPF is affiliated with IPF and that IPF has continued to function trying to onboard some of the smaller countries around the world to their organization. Maybe Adam, you can speak to, I know you had some update about them having an MOU with OCR recently.
Yeah, so they did, they did send an MOU with OCR, but that is also reflective of one particular board member that they brought on. And I, and I think the main difference is, is Caitlin said, like, we've, you know, USPK even before my time had reached out to Victor specifically. And I mean, let's talk about it in plain terms, both IPF and Wolfpuff have Victor at kind of the helm. And most of those decision-making processes go through Victor. And so he was reached out to by USPK. He was also, I believe, reached out to by folks at Parkour Earth to see if he wanted to join. So they declined, which is fine. And we still maintain cordial friendly relations. I think the, the biggest thing to point out is, again, what we're trying to do is slightly different because we are trying to make this very community driven. We're trying to have grassroots kind of input. That's why we have, you know, elections planned. You know, transparent board minutes, et cetera. Whereas, you know, Wolfpuff doesn't have a lot of that at this point. It's, it's a little bit of a more opaque structure and for profit in a lot of cases.
Sorry, WFPF is not, I don't think WFPF is claiming to be a national governing body. It's just a for-profit entity that partners with. They do have USAP, I think, that was kind of doing something. I don't really know the status on that. But there is a set of entities under Victor and his crew that are doing a collection of things in that way. And I would say just tied to that, that's another reason USPK did take a little bit of time to kind of get the engine going is because we were really focused on getting input from the community and making sure there was an opportunity for people if they wanted to to be involved in the process of writing our bylaws and saying how this thing looked. So we, we've definitely taken a lot more time to act collectively. And I think anyone who has worked in a group project can understand that collective actors, collective action democracy takes longer. Obviously, we could have put someone in charge and said, go do this and be quick. But, you know, we decided that it was more important to have that process in place.
Thank you. That totally answers my question.
Awesome. Great.
Real quick question. Let's struggle on a question for here, maybe. But internationally speaking, globally speaking, what other organizations are you guys working with or are part of?
So, and I think Alan might be able to speak a little bit because Alan has been trying to establish some partnerships with other organizations around the country and Adam as well has been speaking to a bunch of different organizations. We mentioned a few. We do have an established relationship with Parkour Earth. We do pay dues and part of your dues to us is dues to them. Obviously, we are in very preliminary conversations with no expectation with US gymnastics. We've also had conversations with US skateboarding. I think, I mean, you can definitely name the ones that you've spoken to. I've, I've reached out to a couple other governing bodies to get input, but we've not formally partnered with any of them. That's not quite traditional. And until we decide basically how we're going to move forward on the competition question, I think we're sort of at a holdoff on, I think, other sorts of like commercial. And I don't even know if we're going to pursue that, to be honest, commercial partnership. That was quite the question. We have looked also at partnership, partnering up with organizations like SafeSport, which help support the recognition of abuse and harassment. How we can provide that education to our members at an affordable cost. Alan, did you want to jump in here?
Yeah, and beyond the commercial partnerships, we've really worked on just advocacy. I think the two biggest like network partners that we can talk, chat about is Empower Work. They're a nonprofit that provides free confidential support for tough work environments. I think this is really cool for parkour business, gym owners that are facing the hardships of COVID and just need someone to chat to. Whether it's emotional support or just, or even business or financial support. Empower Work helps to provide those resources. The second is You Can Play Project. It's basically ensuring the safety inclusion for all who participate in parkour, including LBG2Q plus athletes, coaches and fans. They have a network that includes NCAA, I think NFL, NHL. It's all about building inclusive communities. And they have partnered us with, partnered up with us as well.
Yeah, Ellen's been doing an awesome job with, with some of those reach outs. And as I mentioned before, we've reached out to a couple other national governing bodies who are, you know, very keen to pass on advice. Everyone's been super helpful. We are sticking for the most part, I guess, with kind of nationals since we're trying to be a national governing body ourselves. And we let Parkour Earth do a lot of the kind of international stuff, but we always keep our door open when it comes to that. We've gotten actually quite a few different emails from other parkour federations. Even though the US has kind of been a dumpster fire, I think, for most of 2020. We're still kind of seen in this light of, you know, people pay attention to what the US is doing and what's going on. So we've, we've gotten some of those emails asking specifically, how do you set up a federation or, hey, I exist in this federation? So we pass those on to Parkour Earth and Caitlin's also working on a pretty cool project to put out kind of some governance 101 guidelines so that those folks that are reaching out and looking to us as an example. You know, they, they feel like they're heard and they're, and they're getting something in return.
The last thing on this before we, there's one more question. We're, we're at the place where we should jump over to community breakouts. I will just say that we also do have very good relationships with a lot of the larger national governing bodies internationally. I personally have relationships established for a couple of years now with a variety of, again, the longer, longer established European entities, France, the UK, Denmark, and there's a, there's a bunch. Can't name them, but that won't be listed on our website. And just in case that was a part of the question, all of our member organizations, those will be listed. Those aren't considered necessarily our partners. Partners are these entities that are going to be providing financial or strategic support versus our member organizations where we're providing support to them. The one last question I want to answer, if anyone else, by the way, if anyone has a question they'd like to ask, it's not going to be answered right now. Please drop it into the chat and we will write a response to it. So I want to just quickly address Rob's. That's how you say your name. Question, specific burdens placed on nonprofits that need to be filled or overcome. Specific unique things about nonprofits really revolve around transparency in terms of financial reporting and operations. USPK will make available its nine ninety, which is its tax returns essentially. So its financial performance, a sample of its budget. This information is going to be made available to the general public for download. As well as, you know, any sort of information around conflict of interest. So there are, there are other challenges on the legal and financial transparency end of the spectrum that I think nonprofits should be held to. And that we, again, being committed to good governance transparency being one of those elements and we'll be trying to uphold the highest standards for. But in terms of funding grants, memberships, we just need to be essentially community driven. So none of us here own USPK. We might have put the initial legwork in, but you know, a few years from now, I might not be here. Alan might not be here. You might be here. It's a community owned entity. So none of us get financial benefit from participating and being a part of this. So let's right now jump ahead and go into community workshops. So we have prepped three breakout groups. We're going to just do this for about fifteen to twenty minutes, maximum a half an hour. Actually, I don't know what we decided upon, guys, but we'll see how they, they go. I don't know if we're coming back together afterwards, are we? That may be a coordination question. Okay. So our, our three breakout groups, the first one's going to be business practices. Which is talking about one of the foundations of building a strong organization. And they're going to explore different questions together. I think all these are going to be brainstorming groups. So you're going to be helping us create some content we can release or create a strategy and what we're going to work on over the next couple of months. Competitions, more on competition. It's going to be with Alan and then on park advocacy, you're going to join myself. And maybe it's better if we each introduce her on, I just did a not so great job. So but with park advocacy, we're already talking about what it would look like to better support park and policy initiatives that allow parkour in public spaces. Who else gets on this slide? Adam, do you want to give any further direction or Blake?
So you'll just have an option to select a breakout room in a sec and just pick the one that you'd like to join and then you'll be spirited away to your breakout room.
And sit tight while everyone kind of gets in there and your designated kind of board member gets set up to take some notes and facilitate this. So yeah, this will pop up in a